That to order. Meeting of the Carver Select Board for Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024. This meeting is being recorded by Area 58, Community Access Media, Channel 9, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings in several committees. Please refer to the front page on our website for listing and application. If we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We are starting a little early this evening because there are multiple meetings scheduled in this room. And unless anyone on the board has an objection, we are going to skip down.
Do you want the community prayer or do you want to skip that?
Uh, no. You know what? We should do that right now. Mr. Hoffman, would you hear our community prayer?
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we've been allowed to serve and that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek and keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Thank you for the reminder, Mr. Rock. Okay. Unless there's an objection from the board, we'll skip down to our 650 item, which is a vote to transfer prior year annual town meeting warrant articles to process correct transfers for allocation. And we have our finance director. He's Karen Praval with us this evening. Welcome once again. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and Finance Committee members. I'm requesting to do some housekeeping, accounting housekeeping. There were articles and there's some money on the books that I'd like to transfer into the proper child accounts. So the first one is the council, and these are prior year balances that are on our books. So there was an authorization by town meeting to vote 250,000 into the health insurance reserve. So I'd like to move that into the health insurance reserve. Right now, it's in the general fund. The unemployment.
Sorry, right now, it's in the general fund? Is that what you said?
It's in the general fund.
Oh, okay.
This is more of an accounting bookkeeping. I would like to keep all of the accounts that Town Meeting has authorized to go into reserve funds to be actually in those funds.
Do we need to take each, vote on each one?
We probably should take a vote on each one.
Should we just discuss each one and then take a vote?
I think so, yeah.
So you want a motion first or you just want to have a discussion?
We could have a motion and then we could discuss.
So the motion is to move $250,000 from the general fund to the health, what would you call it?
Health insurance reserve.
Health Insurance Reserve Fund. That's the motion?
I'll second it. We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
It was voted on at town meeting, you're saying?
Yes, it was.
It just never happened?
And these are just, these are on the books and I just want to make sure that they're in the proper child accounts. As we move forward for the FY '25 budget, it's going to be a little different than what you see right now. And anything where we're transferring money from the general fund into reserve fund will be in a separate article. It won't be included in a capital article because as, it's not a capital project. So just some housekeeping that I wanted to run by the committee.
Okay.
Great. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Aye opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you.
And the last is the capital debt stabilization. This money was, has been sitting on the books. Some of these reserve authorizations have been on the books for years. I mean, you're looking at, I mean, four, five, six years and they just keep, they continue to be rolled over year after year after year. And I want to make sure that they're in the proper account. So when I come to ThinkCom and the Select Board, then you can see what we have as a town in these reserve accounts in one ledger. So I request that 490,166 be moved from the general fund into the capital debt stabilization fund as voted by Town Meeting.
I'd like to make the motion. Okay. I move that 490,166 dollars be moved from the general fund to the capital debt stabilization fund?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
So where was this money sitting now in the general fund?
Yeah.
So what happens that it sits in the general fund, should be in a reserve fund. And what happens is at the end of the fiscal year, it will just continuing to, continuing appropriation is this accounting term that reserves that money for year after year and will just stay there. But it's in the wrong fund. Usually what happens is that if it's missed and we close out the books, then that will go into free cash because it's in the wrong accounting fund. So I'm just doing some housekeeping just to make sure that everything that you voted is put into the proper fund so it doesn't get missed and, you know, you'll have an accurate history of what was voted and where the money is residing. So a lot of it's just coming back and forth from looking at software and Vadar and making sure that things are put in the proper accounts.
So this is $490,000. So you said this was accumulated after several years?
No, this was one.
A one?
This is one article. This is one section of a prior year article that was voted to move 490,166 into capital debt stabilization.
And it was never done?
It was not put into the proper account. So it was, it's not, it's not gone. It's not lost. Money hasn't been spent. It just needs to be, it's just in accounting bookkeeping that needs to be in the proper fund. So when I run, when I run a detailed, you know, accounting report, I should be able to run one for your general fund, which will have, you know, your general government, public safety, cultural, et cetera. I can run one report for your stabilization funds. I can one, run a report for your reserve funds. Right now, everything's, when I look at capital projects, I should be able to run one report and see all the capital projects. But right now, everything has been put into one fund. So I'm trying to separate everything so that it's more uniform.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Half a million dollars.
I know. So we need a motion. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any others? That's it?
No, that's all.
All right.
That's good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Why don't we move along and move to our seven o'clock item, discussion and possible vote for the annual town meeting warrant articles. We have the enterprise fund and the transfer of Cranberry Village funds to the stabilization fund. Take your time. I know we're moving around here. Why don't I, while you're looking, why don't I read the article for the first, the enterprise fund, to see if the town will appropriate $636,221 for the North Carver Water District, raised and appropriated as follows. And we have various items in there. And this is a capital expenses, debt, maintenance, salaries, contracts, et cetera, incidental to the North Carver Water District. Ms. West.
Yes. So as you can see, this is different than in previous years. In previous years, you've had a debt service article, an article for their expenses. We've put it all together so you can see their entire account. This is, again, similar to how we presented the CPA article last week. It's just a way of being more transparent because I think previous years, you've had North Carver Water in several different areas of the warrant and now you can see it all together. So you can see their revenues and now you can see where their expenses are. And just to note that included in their expenses is also capital. So we did get an estimation on the meter pit for Middleborough. We didn't get a quote yet because we haven't gotten those back. And that came in about $200,000 more than we were anticipating. So we did allocate, I think it was $225,000 through ARPA. So this gives us an additional $200,000 if in the event we need it for that. And if not, then it can be used for other capital expenses for North Carver Water.
And I think this is much more transparent than it has been in the past. So my good job at putting it on this way. I think that makes a lot of sense. Discussion from the board?
You need a motion to put it on the warrant first?
We do.
All right. So I'll move that we put the article for the enterprise fund of the 636,221 for the North Carver Water District on the warrant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Is there a motion to recommend the article?
I've moved to recommend the article.
A second.
All right. Your motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Why don't we move to the next town meeting warrant article item, the transfer of Cranberry Village funds to the stabilization fund. And I will read that. To see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from available funds to the town stabilization fund, set amount representing the amount transferred from the stabilization fund pursuant to Article Six of the April 11th, 2023 Annual Town Meeting for the purpose of reimbursing residents of Cranberry Village for amounts they paid to the town for operation of the Cranberry Village wells prior to June 30th, 2023, or take any other action relative thereto. Is there a motion to put this article on the warrant?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing? Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
So this is, I'm just trying to read the informational summary.
Right. I was doing that too. Sorry.
This is, if you remember last year at town meeting, there was, there was an issue with wording about reimbursing, reimbursing Cranberry Village for water. So what we did was we took it out of the, the only place we could, we had enough money at one time was in the stabilization fund. So we took it out of the stabilization fund and now what we're doing is we're reimbursing the stabilization. That's what this article does. Are there any other questions on this?
No.
Okay. So all in favor of putting it on the warrant?
Aye.
Aye opposed? It is unanimous. Is there a motion to recommend this article?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. All right. At this time, let's see, it's 5:44. At this time, why don't we go to our 610 agenda item, which is an item to ratify the town administrator contract. Earlier in executive session, we voted on a contract for a new town administrator, Mr. Glenn Cannon. Is there a motion to ratify the contract?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion?
Just, just for the record, we unanimously approved that contract.
We did unanimously approve that contract. And so now, all in favor of the contract?
I was going to say, one of our members had to leave, but it was 5-0. Unanimous.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? It is unanimous. And yes, I will just say that although Mr. Carter had to leave us this evening, he was in favor of the contract as well. And at this time, I see Mr. Cannon has joined us. So, Mr. Cannon, it'd be my pleasure to welcome you up to the microphone and give you the opportunity to say a few words if you'd, if you'd so.
Sure, sure. Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate the board having me here tonight. Looking forward to stepping in with the town of Carver. Can't wait to start on May 14th. So I'm here to observe tonight, but again, ready, ready to go to work as soon as possible. So.
That's great.
Yeah. I know we had discussed it, so I do plan on helping out the town of Rochester through their annual town meeting on May 13th. And they, they appreciate that greatly. They appreciate the board understanding that, you know. So again, happy to step in as fast as.
Then you get to do it twice because you got to help us through town meeting.
Two for one. That's right. But it is, it is a pleasure to have you here and we're very happy this all worked out and we're looking forward to May 14th.
Yeah, me too.
Is there anything else?
I just want to, can I, do I sign tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
In fact, you know what? Why don't we take a brief recess? We'll take a five-minute recess and we'll come back and, and address the rest of our agenda. Okay? We'll be in recess for five minutes.
Sign the contract.
All right. Good evening, everybody. We are back in session. And at this point, I think what we'll do is, we did start a little early. We'll go back to our original six o'clock agenda item, which is citizens' participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board this evening? Seeing none. We will move on to our 625 agenda item, which is a vote to accept the Southern Plymouth County Public Health Excellence Collaborative Intermunicipal Agreement for the Public Health Excellence for Shared Services Grant. Mr. Ford, would you like to talk to us about this?
Yep.
Thanks for coming in this evening.
Thank you. So what you just said, the agreement, there is, just to give you a little bit of background, Carver is involved with a grant. It's a shared services grant funded by DPH. And the name basically says what it is. There are six towns involved, Carver, Wareham, Plymouth, Plimpton, Duxbury, and Kingston. And what the grant is meant to do is to, as a collaborative, determine what towns need, what individual towns need, hire that discipline, and then use those services to share among the towns. So to date, we have hired a public health nurse. She's very active now in our community. She's at the COA on a regular basis. We've also hired a food inspector. And this is how that grant works. Carver doesn't necessarily need one. I do those. But Wareham was in dire need of having a full-time food inspector. It does take a lot of time, especially with the amount of restaurants that Wareham has. And so that fills a need for Wareham. Just recently, we've hired an epidemiologist. Not quite sure how he's going to fit in, in terms of helping Carver. But as soon as that person's been hired, but she starts, I believe, in about three weeks. So I'll be meeting with her and we'll be discussing, I'll be asking her questions like, what, what can you offer us? What do you think the town should be looking, looking at? You know, an epidemiologist would probably follow things like, you know, if there's a triple E outbreak, for instance, from mosquitoes, that type of thing. She would have been very helpful when we had COVID, that type of thing. So hopefully, we don't ever do that again. But so anyway, that's, that's just a little bit of background. In your packet, I had given you the agreement, just to take a look at it. Just so you know, the agreement was reviewed and approved by Attorney Corbo. I also had, I ran that by Bob Fantasy when he was here. He had no issues with it. I also had, just, just some background, Public Health Excellence Grant Program for Shared Services. That's just a document that was put out by DPH, just to give some additional background as to what this is all about. So because of the state, it's the state, they, they did not want to operate under a two-page memorandum of understanding. They wanted a, you know, 12-page document. So what I'm being asked to do through that grant is to just ask the board to sign the agreement. And it's been signed by all other towns. So, but it only requires the chair's signature.
Okay. So just to be clear, so none of these services that this collaborative would provide to Carver have any cost to Carver? It's all funded by the state?
It's all funded by the state. Interesting you asked that. The, the original draft that came out, there was a, there was a section that stated, I'll paraphrase, that in the event that the funds from DPH dry up, that the town would overtake the expenses. And that has, that was summarily dismissed by all the other towns involved. So that's no longer part of this agreement.
So that was my, my second question that I had written down here. So if, for whatever reason, the state discontinues funding, this doesn't automatically fall on the town, it just.
The whole collaborative just basically collapses.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Ford?
Would you like a motion?
Yes.
All right. I'll make a motion to accept the Southern Plymouth County Public Health Excellence Collaborative Intermunicipal Agreement for the Public Health Excellence for Shared Services Grant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Ford. I'll sign it after the meeting this evening.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Let's see. So at this point, so, I'm sorry, Ms. Weston, you said one of the applicants for the avenues of honor committee were not going to come in this evening, right?
Mr. Jones.
Mr. Jones. So Mr. Kelleher, you're here?
Yes.
And Mr. Luzon is here. So we can move on with this item, the applicants for avenues of honor committee. We have three applicants, Adam Luzon, Michael Jones, and Sean Kelleher. Would either of you like to address the board? It's up to you. It's up to you. We certainly appreciate your stepping up and, and taking part in this committee because I think it's important that we get it, we get it off the ground. It's been waiting out there for some time. If, if you don't have any desire to address the board, then I'll, I'll open it to the board for, for a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Adam Luzon, Michael Jones, and Sean Kelleher to the avenues of honor committee.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? It is unanimous. Congratulations, gentlemen. You'll get a letter from the town clerk, Ms. Dayhill, and when you get the letter, you can come into the town clerk's office and get sworn in. Okay?
Awesome.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. So we're moving right along here. We'll move to our next agenda item, the American Rescue Plan update. We have an update of available funds and additional requests. The first item is an exterior drop box for election ballots, including installation. That amount is $4,780.25. Ms. Dayhill, would you like to come up?
Good evening.
Thanks for coming in.
Oh, thank you for having me. Earlier this month, I attended a mini-conference in Duxbury. It was put on by the state and the focus was on election security. So one of the things that came up in that conference were threats against ballot boxes that are left outside. And not to go into great detail or to give any bad actors any ideas about drop boxes, we did have a mini discussion in our department head meeting and Treasurer Kathy Kay had some concerns about the drop box that we currently have. It's one that can't be locked when it's not in use. It's always open and she wasn't too keen on sharing that box any longer with the election stuff based on these threats, you know, placing items inside the box that would destroy the contents is the, the basic theme of it. So knowing that there was some money still available for ARPA, we looked at it because when this first came out, we thought maybe we should have our own box and at the time we could coexist with the box that we had. So we looked into this box and the thing about this box, it's slightly smaller. It's still accessible, handicap accessible. It will probably be installed right next to the box that we have now. But this box can be locked when not in use and it can also be covered during non-election time so that we're not getting other forms of media in there. So it doesn't have to be checked every day. It's just an extra level of security for ballots and I don't think vote by mail is going to go away anytime soon. So it would be a good investment for the town to have its own ballot box, I believe.
So that, that was one of my questions. So this is going to be a separate box that is going to be used only for elections and when the election is over, we're going to make sure it's securely covered so nobody can accidentally drop their, their tax payments in there or something else.
Right. Right. Yep. So it will be locked. It'll be locked so that you can't put anything in when it's not in use. And also, it comes with a cover that you can cover so that no one would be tempted or confused to maybe put something in there. And the coloring of it, it's red, white, and blue. We can pretty much have that, you know, ballot box all over it as opposed to the gray box that we have now for all other town business.
Okay. And I guess, Ms. Weston, this might be a question more appropriate for, for you. I know we've spent a lot of ARPA money recently. So I guess my first question is, we have three items on the agenda this evening. All of them are relatively small. But first, do we, do we have the ARPA money available? And I guess for, well, for this one especially, do we know whether this would be appropriate for a submission to Plymouth County or would this be more for, more of our federal ARPA money?
So I think where it's something that can be placed outside for something like a mail-in voting, we were going to attempt to go through Plymouth County because I think in the event of, you know, another public, you know, catastrophe, that, that this could be a way of still being able to do business.
Okay. All right. Ms. Dayhill, are you aware of any other towns that have done this type of project through ARPA money funded through Plymouth County?
Ah, yes, they have. Yes, they have. And the only reason we didn't try for it originally was because we had the one out there. But now that there are these threats against the drop box and they really would like for them to be able to lock when they're not in use, you know, that's, that's a big thing. So it's a good thing for us.
Other questions for Ms. Dayhill? Anyone? All right. Is there a motion to approve this item?
I'm motion to approve the exterior drop box for election ballots, including installation at $4,780.25.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you as well. The second item is four computer tablets for the emergency medical services, ambulances, and response units. That item is an amount of $12,910.72. Chief, thanks for coming in this evening.
Thank you. So yeah, so we've sent this through ARPA because currently we do have laptops in the ambulances for patient records keeping. We don't have any in our two SUVs, Chief's vehicle and the community EMS vehicle. And we're trying to, as everything gets moved away from paper. So a couple of years ago during COVID, we provided both mobile, in-home vaccinations and also vaccination clinics held at the high school. And because we didn't have the computer system set up, we had to do everything via paper. And that became very time-consuming, very, you know, get water on the paper and stuff like that, it makes it very hard to keep that paper records. A lot of the other vaccination locations were using computers, but at the time, we didn't have anything set up for that, so we didn't have any computers that we could use for that purpose. We did enter everything into the Massachusetts Immunization Information System, the MIIS, because we have to report that. Again, it's just duplication of work. We had to get rosters, and then we had to get a bunch of information, and it would be a lot easier, the other clinics were setting it up with computers. So that's something that we feel, preparing for any future pandemics, these tablets could be used for that, for both in the SUVs for providing out-in-the-field vaccinations and services, but also using the tablets out of the ambulances if we were going to do a vaccination clinic. We, because we would probably have at least one, if not both ambulances onsite, to assist with giving out the vaccines. Gives us a better way to capture signatures of patients who come in to get the vaccine, declination forms, things to that nature. And on the other side of it, it also helps us, the EMS side, with our documentation. These units would be mounted in the ambulances. Right now, they're not mounted. They can be taken out of the mount and brought up to the patient, have them sign it, do a lot of work with that while we're providing care, but it also stores other information, such as state protocols, you know, different policies, procedures are all kept on that tablet.
Great. And I guess the same question for you that I asked Ms. Dayhill, are you familiar with any other towns that have submitted a project similar to this to Plymouth County and had approved?
I know some towns who have in the Passover Cares Act and with ARPA for these types of plans for preparing for future, any vaccination needs and pandemic needs.
Okay, great, thank you. Questions from the board? Anyone? Is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And the last item is a portable smart board and cart for $4,031.91. Mr. Neely, thanks for coming in this evening.
Good evening. So the idea came from this, so we upgraded this meeting room, we upgraded meeting room four. Couple weeks ago, we needed to do something in meeting room three, and we don't have any digital product for meeting room three. I disassembled a TV and reassembled it downstairs after finding somebody to help me carry it down there to accommodate that. So I was thinking about it, a unit, a smaller unit, it's very similar to this unit that's over here in the corner, but a smaller TV, easier to wheel around, lower, so it goes underneath the door frames, could be used, ideally, it would live in meeting room three, but could be used in any room, any office, any meeting room for training, Zoom meetings. So if we ran into, you know, ran into a situation where we had Zoom running in, you know, in all the meeting rooms, we can facilitate that. And that's where this, you know, this idea came from and why it originally wasn't put in the full meeting room upgrade project. I didn't understand that.
No, no, it sounds like a great upgrade, though. Clearly, this board, one of our priorities has been modernizing all the technology here at Town Hall.
Yeah, and we currently have carts, so this is just for the camera, the touchscreen unit. The cart itself, we already have, the cart that was sitting over there in this room, and there was one downstairs in meeting room four. I'm going to reutilize those carts.
And again, just like the previous two applicants, are you familiar with any other towns that have done something similar to this and gotten it approved by Plymouth County?
Other than what we've done here, no.
Okay, all right. Okay, are there questions from the board?
That means we're ahead of the game.
Hopefully, we are. That's right. Okay, anything? Or is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Neely. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Weston, do you have any other updates?
Mr. Sheriff, I could just mention that the TV with the carts that Mr. Neely was referring to were approved through Cares Act, so that's why we think this is highly likely it could get approved through Plymouth County funds.
Great. And I'm just, I know we've had a lot of pluses and minuses, and ARPA's a continuing very much moving target here, so maybe the next meeting or two, we could try to put together another update as to where we are.
Yep.
With ARPA.
Probably the first meeting in May.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Any other questions on ARPA for Ms. Weston?
I guess if, well, can we ask where we are with maybe getting other projects and the monies and things like that?
Right, so I can update you on the funds. So the projects tonight, the request totaled $21,722.88. So if you look under your Plymouth County balance remaining, that would bring you from 285 to 4427 down to 263,521.39. At the last update, the comprehensive update we did, we had some projects being completed at the end of April, which is why I'm requesting to do the update in May. We might have a better standing of where we are in all those projects.
Okay. Okay. One thing maybe we should consider, and perhaps you could have a talk with Mr. Palmeri or other interested parties, I know you mentioned that the meter pit came back from Middleborough at a number substantially higher than what we set aside with ARPA, so it's, we may want to update that appropriation.
So we might not know those numbers till June.
Okay.
Because I know they're going out to bid in May, and I think the bids are due back, I think, the first week in June, I think it was June 8th, so they might not award it till about June 11th.
Okay.
I'm not sure about those exact dates. We are going to find out later this week if Plymouth County will vote to extend the commitment of the funds for ARPA. So once we find that out, that will, might give us more leeway to be able to figure that meter pit total into the Plymouth County funds.
Okay. And I think the one other item that we discussed in here at one point, I don't exactly remember what meeting it was, and maybe my memory is failing me, and we did have a number for it, but I think we discussed some possible outdoor items for the library, that maybe they could run some children's programs or something like that outside. Have there been any further discussions about that?
No.
Okay. Okay. All right, could you, when you have a chance, talk to the library director about that and see if that's something we want to pursue?
Yep.
All right, great. Anything else on this item? All right. Let's see, moving forward, we took care of those couple items, so our next item would be the 7:05 item, the appointment of the Joint Transportation Planning Group Municipal Representative for 2024 and 2025. The suggested representative is John Woods with an alternate of Chris Vincent. Is there a motion?
I move that we appoint John Woods the representative and Chris Vincent the alternate to the Joint Transportation Planning Group as our municipal representatives for 2024, 2025.
Second. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. If you just give me a minute to catch up to where we are here on my screen, we move on to the next agenda item. All right, so we have... Sorry.
It's the open meeting.
Catch up here? Oh, yeah, I'm just trying to get there. So we have received an open meeting law complaint regarding some of the, well, we've received an open reading law complaint regarding some of the ways we handled the Town Administrator Screening Committee.
The reference checks.
Reference checks. The alleged date of the violation was April 2nd, 2024. Is there a motion to send this to Town Council for a response?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Let's see. Next, we have a motion to approve the Select Board nomination for Old Colony Elder Services Board Director. The suggested representative is Connie Kelly. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Town Administrator update. Ms. Weston?
Thank you. I think we updated last week that the library exterior painting will begin this week, so they will begin tomorrow, although I think it's supposed to rain tomorrow, so this will all be weather-dependent. They are hoping to finish within four weeks. Again, hopefully, the rain and the weather cooperate with that. And as we mentioned last, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, and I have a question on that, too. There's going to be repairs, too, because I've noticed that some of the shingles have deteriorated a lot. Do they plan on repairing and painting, or is it just painting?
Are you talking about the roof shingle?
No, the outer, the outer shingles, if you look at the siding, there's a lot of deterioration in some of the siding. I don't know if we've noticed that, but...
That was, has not been approved as a capital item, but I will talk to the Director of Operations and Maintenance about that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So, yeah, that painting will begin, and as we said last week, that will not affect patrons from going in and out of the library. The roof bids for the library and Town Hall have been received, so those are in the process of review to make sure the bid packages are complete and all that before they can award the bid. That is anticipated to begin early summer. The Council on Aging, the new equipment that was approved with ARPA funds will be delivered the week of May 6th. The removal of the old equipment will need to happen, and then the new equipment will need to be installed. So this is scheduled to happen May 7th and May 8th. So on those days, the Council on Aging will remain open. So right now, they're coordinating what activities they will be able to do and what they will need to have to put on hold. So meals on the move will still be happening. The daily lunch on those two days, the in-person lunch will not be happening. For the exact activities that will and won't be happening, they are going to update that in their newsletter and on the website.
Okay, great.
And I believe we have a meeting on May 7th, and I can give another update on that day as to if everything's on time, how it's affecting the Council on Aging, if they're on schedule to reopen on the 9th to full, their full normal activities.
But they will be posting that down there ahead of time so folks know that that's not going to be...
Yeah, so they'll still have activities, they'll just be shifted according to the spaces that they have available.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
All right. Thank you. Any questions on any of those items? All right. We have the executive session minutes of April 2nd, 2024, to approve and not release. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Unanimous, thank you. We have the approval of the minutes of April 9th, 2024.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It is unanimous, thank you. Topics not reasonably anticipated by the Chair, 48 hours in advance of the meeting. There are none this evening. Select Board announcements. Mr. Ryan?
I'd like to remind people to vote on Saturday from 8 to 5. The polls are open, and I'd like to welcome our new Town Administrator, who's going to join us on the 14th of May.
Thank you. Ms. Hewens?
Thank you. Yes, I wanted to remind people to vote, too. Even though some of the races are uncontested, there is one contested race. But even if there were no contested races, I think it's really important for people to vote, tell us how we're doing. And that is going to be at the Carver Middle High School from 8 to 5 on Saturday. Let's dance that. I, too, want to welcome the new Town Administrator. We're all really happy that he's here. And the last thing is to please remember Shane Gives Thanks Food Pantry.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hoffman?
First, I wanted to wish those that observe a happy Passover. Also want to remind everybody for the election, and good luck to those who are running, and thank you to those that actually took out papers and are running. As Sarah said, there's a few uncontested races, so hopefully in the future, we'll get some more people that'll come out for those spots. And last, I'd like to welcome the new Town Administrator as well. Looking forward to working with him on May 14th.
Great, thank you. As for myself, I would also remind everybody to vote on Saturday. I think it's really a pleasure to me to welcome Mr. Cannon to Carver, and I think we just owe a lot of thanks to everybody that worked in this process, because it was really a very quick process, a lot quicker than a lot of people anticipated it happening, and we have a new Town Administrator starting May 14th, so I think that's a credit to everyone that was involved in that. So welcome Mr. Cannon. And finally, Ms. Hewens and I had the pleasure of attending the Fire Department graduation on Saturday, so I wanted to congratulate those graduates, Luke Butler, Zachary Kraus, Thomas Ekbaum, and Barrett de Limpya. So congratulations to them. And with that...
I just had, thank you for mentioning that. I should have mentioned it. I also want to thank you and Mr. Carter for your, our negotiating team, in helping to negotiate and get Mr. Cannon here.
Well, thank you.
Much appreciated.
Appreciate it.
Another thing, too, that, now that you both reminded me, this whole process from the selection committee, to have all those interviews, then to narrow it down to the